I'd like to call the Dallas City Council meeting order for Monday, August the 5th, 2024. First thing on the roll is a pro call.
Excuse me, Council President Schilling?
Here.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Barrientos?
Here.
Counselor Briggs is excused. Counselor Collins?
Present.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Here.
Counselor Jantz?
Here.
Counselor Shane?
Here.
Counselor Verden is excused.
So Black SUV.
Black SUV.
That's mine.
Is that yours?
Is it?
Yeah.
Well, done now.
Why didn't you say that sooner?
There.
Next thing on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
As the allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next thing on the agenda is a proclamation.
So this is a proclamation of the city of, in the city of Dallas, Polk County, Oregon. The proclamation reads, whereas the city of Dallas was founded in 1874 along the banks of the La Creole River, which later became Rick Creole Creek, and whereas, since 1874, the town has continued to grow and change with the needs of the community while maintaining its historic heritage, and whereas downtown Dallas is the heart of the community by playing host to numerous community events and small businesses while also serving as the heart of the town's history, and whereas the city of Dallas, its residents and visitors all cherish the historic architecture and stories present in downtown and believe it is necessary to preserve this history for future generations, and whereas, the city of Dallas successfully applied to have the historic downtown named to the National Register of Historic Places.
Now therefore, that I can tell Woods, Junior Mayor, the city of Dallas, to hereby proclaim August 6th, 2024, as a day to celebrate our historic heritage in the city of Dallas, and I urge all citizens to continue to cherish the city, its history and its future. Sign. The 5th day of August, 2024. Kenneth Alwoods, Junior Mayor. No other proclamation. Okay?
Employee introduction.
Okay.
So I'll invite our police chief, Tom Simpson, to introduce his newest employee.
Mayor, council members, it's my pleasure to introduce Chief Officer Justin Roberts. He's a newest officer, just recently started, he ended up through the mission of a few weeks of onboarding training. Justin comes to us from Huntington, Tennessee. He was a corporal with the Department of Corrections, working at O S P. A few years back, moved out to Tennessee, spent some time in county jail there, and then got recruited to the police department there. A couple of years under his belt there, and decided to come back to work and be around family, so we invited him to join our family, and here he is.
Okay, next on the agenda is public comment. First one I hear is Anne Hurd.
Anne Hurd, 623 Southwest Cato Street.
And you've got three minutes, Anne.
I know. Okay. Dallas Apoply. Yay! The new block center is right there. And downtown Dallas costs $925. And you can get one at Walmart for $19.98. Or, also flies last, or you can buy a raffle ticket at the Aquatic Center and take a chance on winning a game. Okay. That's pretty neat. I got a couple of them for my boys for Christmas. Money. We are $55 short of giving the city of Dallas trust account another $5,000. We had a, we asked for donations in July, and so far, we, 16 people have donated a total of $2,800. And that's added to the what, the 20, 12, 100, something, 12,000 that we had. Every time we have $5,000 over $10,000, we give it to the city. And we're hoping that this $5,000 won't give you the $55 that we need. Maybe he said they were going to, I don't know. I don't know. Anyway, we will hopefully be able to cover the overrun of the cost of putting in the lazy river pump, because when they took the old one out, the pad, of course, was completely destroyed, they had poured in bad. And so we've already given them 13,000 for installation, but they're going to be more, and hopefully that $5,000 is covered. So that would go to Cecilia, as soon as we get that in our town. I wanted to be three letters that came with some of those donations, because they were really nice. This one's from Linda Rosenblow. Hi, Anne. Thank you for what you're doing for the Aquatic Center. I started coming to the pool in January of 2009, and it really helped me so much over the years. It's still helping me cope with life in general. I made so many friends over the years, and I'm so very thankful. I hope this will help a little. God bless you, Anne. Linda. That's really nice. And this one came from Dorothy Robinson. Thanks for your hard work to keep the center open. It is such a treasure for all the surrounding community. I can't come anymore, but I did enjoy it when I did, and it really helped me keep mobile. It would be a crime. She was the one, she can't go anymore, but she's still supporting the pool. This one's from Dawn Andrews. We all know Dawn. Diane. Dear friends, our fabulous Aquatic Center is one of our most treasured gems of Dallas. In fact, it was right near the top of our list of all the good reasons to live here when we retired to Dallas back in 2007. I exercised regularly for the first time in my adult life because of the benefits of water's buoyancy and the warmth of the hot tub and therapy pool. By increasing the effective, effectiveness of my circulatory system, I have been able to completely reverse earlier symptoms of lower body neuropathy. In gratitude and support of helping the friends of the Dallas Aquatic Center continue providing funding for the operation of the center, please find a close heart check for Tuesday. Keep up the good work.
Thanks, Anne.
Thanks, Anne.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Bob Leish.
Bob Leish.
Lesh.
I haven't done this before.
You state your name and address, and you're given three minutes.
Oh.
We'll, we'll keep time.
My name is Bob Leish. I live at 1411 Southeast Hawthorne, which is right off Barbary, and my back property backs up to the trail along the creek and the creek. The reason I'm here is to talk about electric scooters and electric bicycles. I had one almost run me down when I went to get the mail about 10 days ago, and I stopped the kids, and I said, you need to be riding those in the street. And they were all three, two were on bikes, one was on an electric scooter. The bikes were also electric. And I explained to them, they were reasonably, for teenagers, nice, so, you know, but they said, well, it's only a battery powered. I said, I don't care what it's powered by, it's still a powered vehicle. So, we have a lot of walkers, we have a lot of older people like me, we have three homes with little tiny kids on that street, right within walking distance of my house, and I am here to ask you to get an ordinance to prohibit electric bikes and scooters from riding on sidewalks on residential streets. I came to the police department, and they said, you have an ordinance for downtown, but nothing for the residential area. And I'm a former insurance agent, and this gentleman here would back me up, you're opening yourself to a liability suit if somebody gets hurt by a motorized vehicle, and I don't want to see that. So, that's all I gotta say, and, and you're nodding, so that tells me you're agreeing with me. So, anyway, any questions?
Thank you, Bob.
I'm sorry, my hearing is bad, so I, hard to get, hard to hear.
She did great.
Next on the list is Warren Kukin?
Kukin. Kukin? So you've all heard my name, Warren Kukin. I live 1378 Southwest Alexander Drive.
Remind you, you've got three minutes.
Okay, fine, thank you. Three issues I want to address. We have a house in the neighborhood, 1353 Southwest Alexander Drive, and I'd like to have every one of you drive by, take a look at it, you wouldn't want it in your neighborhood. The garbage can's set in the middle of the street, the trash cans are open, they put trash on the outside of their garbage cans when the dump, or the garbage can, or dumpster guy comes by, falls all over the street, they don't pick it up, they just walk around it. It's caught them draining the oil out of their vehicles on the street. We had our streets paved last year, if you drive by and look at the street, you'll see it's full of oil on both sides of the street. They have consistently parked unlicensed vehicles on the street, they have one right now, they have another one they towed in, it still has a tow strap on it, they have five vehicles on the street, they have two disabled cars and one disabled, like a Tacoma or something, sitting in their driveway, they've been there for over two years. Myself and other people in this room and other neighbors have constantly called code enforcement to cover them up, they buy the cheap covers, they fall off, and then code enforcement says, oh, well, it's a hardship, we gotta give them a couple of months to get a new cover. The other thing is, is they constantly drive by and wave at you and tell you you're number one and cuss you out. And the other issue I want to talk about is they pull up and park in front of my house, my TV is from here to you, in my house, their car's parked 50 feet away, and I can't hear my TV because their car plays such loud music. I've called the police department, there's no noise ordinance until after 10:00 PM and before 7:00 AM, so I'd like to see about an ordinance. Code enforcement said they've had problems with this in the past with other people playing their music too loud. Our neighbors have said they've been cited before, you can hear their vehicle playing music more than 10 feet away. Why doesn't Dallas have one of those codes? The other issue is getting some stoplights or more stop signs on Ellendale. You're building more homes out on Ellendale on both ends of town, and you can hardly get on Ellendale from some of these parking lots. So, I would like to see some more stoplights in there. I've talked to Brian about this before, everybody in code enforcement knows who I am, Tom knows who I am, if you have any issues, give me a call, I'm inviting you to come out and take a look at my place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Robert Greenway. You state your name and address, and you've got three minutes.
Yes, sir. Robert Greenway, 2223 Southeast Academy. I have to change up my first comments, and that's a simple thing, about rain gardens in Eden Glen and Development, which were required, well, supposedly not required by the city, but the developer and builder, Fowler, had an, had an option to put them in. Evidently, the city's gonna have to spend their money to fix mine and the neighbor's rain garden because it doesn't, it wasn't done right and wasn't caught. So I just found out this morning for the assistant manager, assistant city manager, that because these issues weren't caught when they were installed, that now the city's on the hook for fixing them. And it's not just mine, it's almost every one of them that is in the subdivision. Don't shake your head. So, you know, that's gonna cost the city a good sum of money because, again, inspections weren't done when the rain gardens were initially installed, and now they're gonna have to go back and fix them on their own dime, and evidently, you guys are hurting for money because you're, you know, taxing more and doing things to get the budget back up and increase the, the building permits and all that stuff, so go figure that one out. Next is, I talked about the last time I was here, I guess they had a break, a little force of July thing, about the corruption and collusion in the city and building department for falsifying public records. Still waiting for a police report on that issue. And I hope you citizens, city council, take heed to that because it's a, a big problem. If anyone wants to go out and look at the problem physically, I can show it to them, the city and the building department doesn't seem to want to. Something completely different that I think the, I don't know who, is the city or the city council needs to look in, is there is price fixing and price gouging going on by the Safeway gas entity here in, in Dallas. I've been talking to them about it for a while, and they have no, no reason for it, supposedly the manager called up their headquarters, who's in charge of it or whatever, and they can't give them an explanation, but if you look at the price from them and three other places compared to the other ones and places everywhere else, even Safeway in Salem is 50 cents a gallon cheaper than the one here. So I don't know if you guys have an ordinance for price fixing or price gouging, but the people that shop at Safeway gas part of it is suffering greatly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody on the telephone?
No.
Okay. Anybody else? Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda, that is to approve the July 15th, 2024 work session minutes and to approve the July 15th, 2024 city council meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second any other discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda, reports or comments from the mayor and council members.
I think the city of Dallas should, at the very least, take a look at climate change and how it's affecting the city. In 2002, you could count on two to three days of weather that was in excess of about 90 degrees. By 2024, you can count on two to three weeks of excess temperatures that are 90 plus and over. Maybe one way we could do this is track on how it affects wildlife as well as personnel, but at the very least, I think the city of Dallas should form a committee that looks at climate change and forms a five to 10-year plan with recommendations.
Just want to comment for all the councils that were able to attend the parade for Dallas Days. It was very well received, the whole parade was, the Dallas Days was well received, it was enjoyable riding on the parade and seeing all the people that were involved and very thankful for all the city is currently doing. Then I would also encourage everybody that tomorrow night, if you're available to go to National Night Out, that is tomorrow night, right? And do we have a list of where those are going to be?
We do, yeah. So we have five block parties that are scheduled for National Night Out. We'll get that list out, I can get it, I can get it to you tonight.
Great time to go see the system.
Yeah, I'll just piggyback on that when it comes to pointing things out, that if anybody doesn't know it, there's going to be a ribbon cutting tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock at the old B of A location, you know, in honor of the recently established National Historic District and more than they're here. Be really nice to see a big turnout for that because it is a big deal.
Reports from city manager and staff.
Thank you, Mayor Woods. So I just have one report tonight, and that is regarding the development code amendment process. So this is on page eight of your packet. So it wasn't that long ago, I believe it was earlier this year, where the council adopted some development code updates after a long process through several rounds of meetings and discussions. There were, you know, a handful of topics that were, you know, either unresolved or not part of the code amendment package. Counselor Schilling reminded me that the sidewalk landscape strips, it's the bottom bullet on page eight, actually was resolved, and we resolved not to do anything with our code, so that one we can take off this list. But the others, bicycle parking, town, town home garage openings, driveway widths and garage setbacks, were topics that the council wanted to have further discussion, further refinement on the proposals. In addition to those four topics, staff have also identified through some code enforcement work that when we updated our signed code, I believe in 2021, we inadvertently created kind of a prohibition on any flags that are not government endorsed or adopted flags, so the United States flag, state, you know, state flags, the POW MIA flag, anything beyond that scope, so like, you know, summer is here flag, or maybe your sports teams flags, things of that nature, you know, political flags are common nowadays, those aren't allowed in the city of Dallas. And so, we feel that there should probably be an amendment to that, and so we're proposing to add that to this list of existing topics. And so our plan is to begin to reengage the council on these prior amendments, the flag amendments, we'll have some work sessions just so we can get some guidance from you on that, on those topics. Once we have that guidance, we'll then go through the land application process, submit our notice to the Department of Land Conservation Development, have public hearings with the planning commission, and then the council to adopt those code amendments. I'm also looking tonight if there are additional topics, things that you've been thinking or things that aren't identified here, that you may want the council, or you may want the staff to kind of look at, draft some amendments, or we can bring them back for a further discussion with the council when we start this process, looking for those. I will note that there are some, some legal amendments based on recent state legislative actions which require some code amendments. We're gonna keep those separate from what we're talking about tonight. Those are already in process, we're, we have to have those adopted by the end of the calendar year. These other amendments aren't as time sensitive and legally time sensitive, so we're gonna run the Senate Bill 1537 land use amendments as a separate process, but we are running through with that. Counselor Schilling also gave me another topic, do you want me to just address this?
Sure.
Yeah, so, so this is an example of just something else that we would add that's not on the list here, and that's Section 2.2040, talks about adjustments and exceptions to the general building, or general development standards for buildings, and specifically setback, setbacks in yard areas for extensions off of residential buildings, so eaves, chimneys, stuff of that nature that goes beyond the wall. There's a, a code tweak to really say, as long as you're within what building code and fire code allows, right now the setback says you can go up to three feet, well, in the medium and high density zones, we already reduced setbacks to three feet, which means you can't have any of those architectural features or other elements on a building extend into the setback area. So, we need to fix that to say, as long as the building code allows you, and the fire code allows you to extend into that, then that should be okay. So that's the amendment that's, that Counselor Schilling would like to see amended. Makes some practical sense, so.
Can you explain to me the setback? Like, is, so say this is the house and this is the wall dividing them?
Yeah.
The eve of this house can't go over the wall?
So if, I'll take these two pieces of property or two pieces of, so imagine this white piece of paper, that along edge here is the property line, and this is your house, right? Actually, imagine this side is your property line, this is your house. The white page is three feet wide, so from this property line over here, on the, on my right side, your left side, this house can only be three feet from this line, can't be any closer, so that's the wall. It also says that any of the architectural, so this, this is the wall.
The edge of the orange.
This is the, this is the wall here.
Of the house.
Of the house.
Okay.
This white line is your property line, this is three feet wide, so your house can be this close to the, this side of the white paper, can't be any closer. Your wall can be that close, or your architectural features in the medium and high density zone. So in order to have eaves that extend beyond the wall of the house, you would actually have to move your house further away from the property line in order to build eaves. Building code allows you to have a three-foot setback and then one foot of extension into the setback with your eaves. So we just need to, it's a technical fix to allow the building to still remain three feet away with eaves projecting into that three-foot setback by an additional foot.
Why would we change that?
It's, it's an allowance under building and fire code, and so, otherwise you're, you're saying.
It is allowed to have the eve closer?
Yes, yes. So your development code currently is more restrictive than what building codes and fire codes allow, and so from a practical sense, you'd like to have all your codes kind of aligned.
Anything that projects into the three-foot setback up to two feet, a two-foot setback has to be a one-hour fire.
So the basic idea is to bring all the codes into conformity with each other?
Correct. Yep. Correct. You have competing codes that don't, they're, they're out of order.
Yeah. So again, we're not here to necessarily discuss this tonight, but this will be one that we'll add to the list.
When we do discuss that, can we get a drawing?
We will visually show it a whole lot better than I did tonight.
Thank you. That was lovely, and I got it, but it would also be helpful to actually have a drawing of two houses with the property line and two eaves, so we can actually see what that looks like.
Yeah, yeah, we'll certainly include that. It would be better if I had four arms, too, that would have helped, but.
The only reason I brought it up is you have planning doing something that building should be doing.
Question. Yep. We very recently, as you know, took some stuff out of the development code and moved it into the municipal code. Do you envision that you're gonna find any other things in here that we might want to do that with?
I don't think there's anything that we've identified as staff that's currently in the development code that should be in the municipal code. We most recently did that with the animal ordinances, and that made sense to put that because that's more nuisance related into the municipal code. We can certainly look for those things as we're evaluating the code.
I'm not trying to pile on extra work, I was wondering if you already had something in mind.
There's, there's nothing in the hopper that, that is in that category. So I know there's been some discussion about downtown permitted uses, is that something that the council wants to look at? Uses that you allow in the downtown central business district?
That's one that's near and dear to my heart, yeah.
Okay. That, that was a topic that I know has been brought up at least in the past, and so if you want us to add that to this list, we'll do that.
And I also brought up that I think that we need a more inclusive procedure that we're going to go through when we do the development code, including some stakeholder meetings.
Okay.
Lead citizens, all urban builders.
Lane, isn't one of the 19 or however many, isn't that one of them?
Rule number one.
Yeah.
Yeah, citizen involvement. There's, there's not like detailed prescriptive process for that, and oftentimes, goal one is satisfied by the public, by the planning commission having a public hearing. I think what Councilor Schilling is asking for is a little bit, going a step beyond that to say, hey, when we're amending the development code, we probably need to, you know, have a stakeholder meeting that, you know, looks at the proposed revisions ahead of time to, you know, for additional refinement and feedback and stuff like that. So we'll incorporate that into these changes.
It may not be mandatory, but it's maybe a good idea.
Sure. Yeah. Right, well, if there's nothing else, there's recommended motion on page nine just to initiate the development code amendment process, and we'll incorporate these listed topics in that.
I move to initiate a development code amendment process.
Second.
Move to second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Next thing on the agenda is the first reading of ordinances, ordinance number 1897.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 1897 is an ordinance amending Dallas City Code Section 7.850 and 7.856 relating to itinerant merchants as mobile vendors. So I will give just a quick report on this since the council has not seen this ordinance yet. We did take it to the Public Administration Committee. It was discovered earlier this year when we had two ice cream trucks come into town and say, hey, we want to be able to operate in the city. You know, what permit do we fill out? And upon review of the itinerant merchant code, it was not clear that you can mobile vend, meaning drive around and sell things through the city under that permit. And if you couldn't do it under that permit, there was really no permit that allowed you to do that. And so what we as a city decided was, there's no permit for that, so go ahead and do it. So we allowed them to operate without a permit. However, you know, we want to make sure that people are operating businesses and doing it safely and that we have safe people doing those businesses. So we like to run, you know, criminal background checks and other things like that on individuals that are doing that. And so we felt a fix was needed. That's what this ordinance addresses. It adds a definition of mobile vendor to Section 7.850, and then under 7.856, it adds some kind of standards around safe operations for mobile vendors when they're driving around the community and selling their goods and wares. So those are the proposed changes in this amendment. The Public Administration Committee recommended that the council approve this ordinance.
What the permit that they would need to get if they were serving food or something like that, would they have to have a, I don't know what they call it.
Food handwork.
Like a health card?
Yep, yeah, so that's a separate permit that they get at Polk County.
But they would have to produce that.
They would, yes. Yeah, in fact, what we, they don't have to produce it in order to get a permit from us because they can get our permit first and then go get the health county one, but we require as a condition of their approval that they get that. And so if they're operating and we go and do an inspection, which we do inspections from time to time, and they don't have that health card that they can, you know, show us at the time of doing the inspection, then we'll pull their approval and they won't be able to operate anymore.
Can you just appoint a clarification? So at no point in time did any staff member or police officer ever tell any mobile vendor that they weren't permitted to be a mobile vendor?
That's correct. To my knowledge, we did just the opposite, which is the two ice cream truck vendors that came and talked to us, we let them know, hey, there's not a permit for you to do this, so you can go ahead and do it. And to my knowledge, both of them did.
I'm guessing though that even though we didn't have a structure in place, that they still had to get approval from the county.
I don't think prepackaged, if they're selling prepackaged ice cream, I don't think that requires.
Because it's not being prepared.
Right, right. But if it was a mobile vendor, like a food truck that drove around and sold, you know, food, ordered, you know, ordered food that they made on their stove, you know, stove tops, then that would require a county permit.
Like those guys down on the corner, if they were, if they were mobile.
Yes, if they were mobile and doing this, which would be allowed under this ordinance, then they would have to have the county health permits.
So we have mobile food trucks that go job to job. Are those?
Those are.
Without a license?
So when you mean job to job, are they going and like staying somewhere for a day or a week?
It's a road truck, isn't it?
They are not licensed.
Oh, yeah.
We have food delivery trucks that go from house, project to project.
Oh, like trucks.
No, 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 no.
Like the taco truck, the drive, the sandwich truck, the drive truck. From construction site to construction site. They're a mobile vendor, we don't.
Yeah, so we don't.
And they do, I mean, it's not all packaged.
Yeah, so they're, they're not, they would fall under the ice cream truck scenario, right? Not a permit for them currently. This would, this would be the category that they would fall under, they'd be required to get a permit from us. And if, if they're required by the county to get their health permits, then they would have to do that, and we would condition that. So part of our application process talks about food preparation and things of that nature, so that's stuff that we tease out through the application process.
Yeah, I recognize the need for a background check for risk mitigation. Something else that you may want to consider is a DMV records check as far as driving or hazardous driving or stuff like that, just mitigate.
Yeah, and I might have misspoke by saying criminal background check, so we look both at the criminal side and also at the driving side. So we have an understanding of all of kind of the police activity involving that individual.
Thank you.
Yep.
I know this particular situation is very big and important. Large manufacturers, they pull up out front, go out and get their sandwiches or whatever it is.
It's happened in the last five years.
Yeah.
There's, I think, two, at least two trucks every day.
And you stay there for.
Because I thought it was one, but it's one, I think it's a company out of Salem that does it. But they have multiple food trucks in town.
They're the primary.
Any more questions? I declare the ordinance number 1897 to pass its first reading. Second reading, ordinance is ordinance number 1896.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 1896 is an ordinance declaring 10 acres more or less of territory being tax lots 301 and 302 of Polk County Assessor's Map 7.5.30, annexed to the city of Dallas and withdrawn from southwestern Polk County Rural Fire Protection District, and designating the zoning of said property as residential medium density RM and declaring an emergency. So just again, a reminder on this, the reason for the emergency clause is because two days from now, we're 90 days from an election cycle, and you can't annex land within 90 days of an election cycle. So the emergency clause allows this ordinance to take effect immediately, meaning the property can be annexed. We're going to file paperwork tomorrow so that we are making the deadline and not making this applicant wait until after, you know, the first week in November to have their property annexed.
Is this where the apartments are going?
This, this would zone the property RM, which apartments aren't allowed to use. They don't, they've not submitted for a development plan, but I would, I would say that the applicant's plan is to submit an application for apartments. This is on James Howe Road, it's far northwest corner.
So what if I didn't want this to pass its second reading? If I was against this?
So you will vote no. We're gonna, it's, so the mayor will declare it to pass its second reading, he'll put it up for vote, and then we'll do a roll call vote tonight.
That was first.
That's first. So, yeah, the first reading, this is the second reading, so there will be a vote on this, and if you're not in favor, you can vote no.
Okay, thank you. This is the Wyatt node?
This is, this is on the west side of the Wyatt node.
It's not in.
It's not in the Wyatt node, it's adjacent to.
Keep in mind, this ordinance implements approval, Lee, already.
Right.
No more discussion?
I'm sorry, Lee, what did you say?
This ordinance implements approval that the council already gave after the hearing on the application. So you voted to approve it, and this is the ordinance coming back to you that actually implements that decision. You still vote no, but it would be confusing to have approved it in a hearing and then not approve the ordinance.
Right, I get it. But I just, I just feel like that's, I don't think Dallas is ready for that much traffic and that many homes. Where are their children going to go to school? Where are they going to buy their groceries? Where are they going to work? Where are they going to drive?
Well, when someone submits an actual application to build there, all those questions are going to be part of the process they go through with.
Yeah, but that's too late because now they're going to build the homes.
Not if they don't get permission to do it.
Well.
Not if the planning commission or whoever votes no.
I understand that they're going to give 6% to put in the stoplight, but that doesn't, when you have hundreds of cars going through in front of Lio School, we voted not to put our pickleball court at Kingsborough Park because we didn't like the traffic by the ball fields and the schools. And now we want to build hundreds of apartments and homes up in that area? And we don't have homes, we don't have shopping, we just, we don't have it here.
Well, from years on the planning commission, I can guarantee you that transportation issues are one of the things that come under the microscope when a builder poses to build something.
You have one street. I don't really, I mean.
And, and there are options. And there are options. You can make the builder do things to widen the street or do things to the street, or you can say, no, you can't build there because there isn't enough. That's one of the issues.
I'm just going to say no.
That's one of the issues that comes under the microscope when these things are submitted for approval. Transportation, yep.
I have a question, actually. I thought you brought this up. Because you brought something up that I don't think we've talked about yet. Do we, and I know this is out of, out of order, because today we're just talking about annexing in the property to city, to the city.
Designating the zone.
Right. We're not talking about what gets done.
No deal.
So I know that my question doesn't have to do with this specific thing, but this is the first time I've thought of, do we think about the impact, the potential impact to schools when we're considering development? I know we think about traffic because we have to do the traffic study.
That's not a criteria.
That is not a criteria.
No, that's not a criteria, but I would say that the school districts in the city, we coordinate all a lot of things. I know Chief Simpson and myself both meet the superintendent monthly. The superintendent, and when I talk to him, is excited about having apartments come into the city of Dallas. He feels that that's needed. And so those are, those are conversations that I've had with him. But it is the school capacity.
We've already restructured our entire district and all of our school buildings because we don't have enough room. Our class sizes are too big. We don't have enough teachers. We don't have enough money to pay the teachers. So I don't really, something's not jiving with me. Something doesn't make sense there.
Tickle.
Can't handle it.
This is usually done during the public, during our comment period. I think it would probably behoove us to have a workshop that deals with development. Because, Lane, correct me if I'm wrong, if we meet, the development code is based on the ordinance, the state ordinances, and if a developer brings a piece of property to us and he meets the requirements and we, and they don't make it through planning, so they appeal to the council and they don't make it through council, but they've met all the requirements, and then they can appeal to Luba, who then tells us that we have to pick it.
Land Use Board. Land use.
So it's just going to delay. If they meet the criteria, then the city council really is just enforcing the state laws that are embodied in our development code. And what I would like the workshop to be focused on is deciding what we want to be as the city of Dallas. Because we can shape our development code to be a little bit, there's a little bit way, but not a lot.
Within the limits imposed by state law.
That's like, so right now, the reason I brought up the portion of the development code that didn't conflict is because there's a conflict there, and you have planning saying one thing and building saying another, and it's just a clarification, getting it simplified. But state law says that RM and RH have three-foot setbacks, and the lots are, the only way that house prices can come down is the lots are getting tighter and tighter and tighter because roads and infrastructure costs so much to build the street frontages as wide as we used to build them. And so as the streets get smaller, so now you're saying, if you keep the code the way it is, you're saying, well, we don't care about the RM, RH. We just want to add another foot and a half on each side so that you can have overhangs, or we can have buildings with no overhangs, which I don't want to see it look like that. So is that enough clarity?
Yeah, that's enough clarity. We'll, we can put a work session together, it'll likely be in September on this topic.
Yeah.
Might be worthwhile if we're going to have a formal work session like that to cover a few other topics related to how this kind of stuff gets approved and where our hands are tied and whether or not.
Yeah, we can provide a training as part of that work session.
But again, this has nothing to do with what we're about.
Right. My good question. I hadn't thought about that before.
I declare 18, ordinance number 1896 to pass its second reading. The secretary will call the rule, please.
Counselor Jance?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor President Schilling?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Bariantos?
Yes.
Counselor Collins?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
No.
Passes six to one.
Okay. Clear ordinance number 1896 to pass, majority vote. Anything else?
Nope.
Anything else? Okay, well, we are done for tonight. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. I never had thought about the impacts to school.